Hello, I'm Jennifer Ostrowski. I'm from Highland Elementary. I've been working in U-46 for the last 10 years, six of which have been at Highland. Throughout my teaching, I've been in three buildings in this district and I've taught every grade level from K to 6. I have sought out many resources, myself with my own funding, during my years of teaching, to provide for my own professional development to reach the needs of my children, my students in my classroom. I earned my master's degree within the first four years of me becoming a teacher. I taught kindergarten for three years at Highland before I was moved to first grade this year. During that time, the first year that I was in kindergarten, I attended the Illinois ASCD Kindergarten Conference in Schaumburg, and I paid for that myself for the $200 and something dollars cost of that. I have also sought out Jolly Phonics, which is a program that Highland had purchased, and I sought out training for that program. I have also reached out to trainers in Illinois for that program and met with these trainers. And I have purchased new updated materials with my own money to benefit my students because it has been proven through research that that program is a successful program. And in that timeframe, I spent hundreds of dollars on resources, other resources, for my classroom, for my students. During my kindergarten teaching, I have had above 7% of my kids at or above grade levels every year at the end of the year on their FMP and PSI. Highland has seven teachers needing the ESL endorsement. There are seven teachers who have a master's degree, and one of those seven teachers is also nationally board certified. Combined, we have 58 years of experience at Highland alone. Teachers at Highland are leaders. We have leaders on multiple committees. Highland has been acknowledged by this board for success, the success of the Gale Gordon Summer Reading Program for the last two years. We have also been acknowledged for being exemplar of PBIS for the last two years. We feel the 2016 deadline that has been given is not a feasible amount of time for our staff to complete this for both financial reasons and the time that is needed for this ESL endorsement. We are being asked to sacrifice not only our finances, but also our time with our families. As a single parent, I do not have the financial means to sacrifice at this time for this ESL endorsement. I don't have the time to sacrifice with my child and only me. Financially, my money goes to everything to survive right now. I would not only have to pay an additional childcare fee, I would also be paying for the tuition. That's a lot to ask of any parent, of any teacher. If I may continue, I just have a couple more. We're just asking the board to provide us with more flexibility and financial support in getting this endorsement. Would the board please help us keep our working teams together, as well as other buildings who have very well-working teams together? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Cody Holt. I'm a resident of Elgin, and thank you for hearing me tonight. I want to talk about a touchy subject, a personal subject for many stakeholders, and this being the tax increase levy tonight. Many of you have done your research on this issue, you've prayed for guidance, and spoke to state officials. That itself is commendable. During these budget discussions, I mean during the budget discussions, I stood with about seven to 10 stakeholders who urged you to reconsider this adopted budget because the taxes would be raised. We knew at that time how unreliable state finances were. We didn't have to wait till today to find that out. We were told that night that it was not a tax discussion, that it was a budget discussion. However, those terms are not mutually exclusive. Had you voted no on the budget, which included a spending increase and an increase in administrators, you would be looking at a flat levy tonight. Staff would have revisited the budget by cutting redundant employees and minimized spending. The new fiscally responsible budget would have been brought back to you for consideration. Tonight's story would have been a different narrative. At the last board meeting, feelings and emotions were evidently displayed by each one of you. I wish you would have listened to the constituents who care enough to show up and talk about the budget instead of throwing them off to the side as some minority group in the district whose opinions are outlandish. Tonight, you are making the bed, and you will have to sleep in that bed. I had the pleasure of speaking to Jeff King at the CAC meeting on Thursday. I asked him the question if a flat levy was possible this year. He said that a flat levy was possible, however, the district would lose out on extra money in the coming budget, and cuts would probably have to be made. During the budget talks, I sat up here and I showed you exactly where those cuts could be made from within this own administration. Those cuts would have saved the district $1.1 million. The bottom line is a flat levy is very possible. Voting on a fiscally responsible budget is the key to having lower taxes. Budget discussions are the most important thing you will have to vote on as the board, and I hope next year there will be a more in-depth discussion about the budgets and where we could make cuts or where we could spend a little bit less. Vote no on this tax increase and relieve the tax burden on your fellow community members. Thank you. Have a good night.
The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
So the consent agenda, we have minutes of the board meeting November 18, itemized bill December 19, 2013, personnel report is December 9, 2013, amendment 243B plan to accept rollovers into the plan, proposal plant operations, district-wide electric power supply services, change order Highland Elementary fire alarm system replacement number one, final associated electrical contractors in, change order to lock-in high domestic water piping replacement number one, final northwest contractors in, and building for Magilla Elementary nurses office expansion.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda that need more than the one removed? Okay, here in none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda of December 9, 2013? Any discussion? Local call, please.
Ms. Vindelman?
Yes.
Ms. Lunealholt?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroeder?
Yes.
Is that in precedent?
Yes.
Under discussion national, we have the tax levy certificate, Mr. Burnage, federal county operations officer, and the county operations officer are going to review the certificate and answer any questions. The tax levy certificate is the final draft of the levy amounts which will be filed with the county clerks. These are the same amounts that were presented at the last meeting. The certificate must be filed by the last Tuesday in December. Administration recommends the board adopt the certificate of tax levy.
Are there any questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the tax levy certificate for 2014?
So moved.
Any discussion? Can't wait. Can I correct before we vote? I think I said 2014. Didn't I?
Yes.
I'm sorry, 2013. I'm a year ahead of myself. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh, you have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay.
It needs to be amended.
I need amended.
You have an amended motion?
Yes. Could I have a motion to amend it? Any discussion? Local call, please.
Ms. Lunealholt?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Ms. Bywood?
Yes.
Is there a question?
Yes.
The tax levy resolution is to be presented again, Mr. Burnage. Yes, the tax levy resolution is an annual resolution needed to allow administration to file the certificate of tax levy. The resolution and certificate of tax levy are filed with the county tax extension offices and must be filed by the last Tuesday in December. Administration recommends the board adopt the tax levy resolution.
Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve the tax levy resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion? Local call, please.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes.
Ms. Schroeder?
Yes.
Ms. Vindelman?
Yes.
Ms. Lunealholt?
Yes.
Is that in precedent?
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is other business, board members. Could I start?
Sure.
Because we have a special pin here. Our superintendent is receiving his five-year pin. I would like to present this to you, and congratulations on your five years with the district. Okay, anyone?
Speech?
Speech?
Well, I don't think I want to say anything.
That's your speech?
That's my speech. Your speech was different.
No, it's been a pleasure and an honor to serve this district. And I think, again, who would have thought, you know, this is my sixth year in the district. And as you, the board, well knows, the tenure of school districts' superintendents in these kinds of districts is around two and a half years or less. And in the same time that I've been here, there have been, I think, five or six superintendents in the east side of Chicago Public Schools. And so, it's very hard to move, make progress, hardly even move on things, but there's a change in term of leadership. And so, I really appreciate the support that the board has given, and I think we've made some progress, and as much as I'd like to, it's really some places in the right direction.
Okay, anyone else?
Some of us attended the Center House, the Holiday Open House today, Center House. And Center House is our program that helps our young adults with disabilities continue their education to the age of 21, I believe, correct? After they age out of high school?
Eleven months.
Yeah, almost, just shy of 22. But anyway, it really is an amazing program that helps our young adults gain the highest level of independence that they can, and they always are so happy to host that open house every year, and it's a pleasure to go to that program. And Tracy and I had a lovely tour by Max, student Max, today, and we learned all sorts of great things about the program. And I'm really proud that our district can, that has the means to continue to support those students and their families.
I'm so glad you brought it up because every year we do this, and I forget to say something about it. I just love this. The Center House is a wonderful, wonderful place. It's full of positive energy and positive kids doing, growing up in a positive way. It's very lovely. So thanks for the money.
They had Max, our tour guide, show us the independent chart, and for one, and where he had been marked independent, meaning that he is able to go on these outside excursions by himself because he's attained the level of independence required to not need supervision. But he showed me the task sheet for going to the bank. And so, I think, you know, as adults, we think about go to the bank, you decide in your mind to go to the bank, you get in your car, and you go to the bank, do your banking business. Well, when in fact, the Center House has going to the bank broken down, there must have been fifty steps?
Easily.
Easily, front and back, fifty steps that these kids have to master, and they have to get a zero, which is counterintuitive. Zero is a good thing in this scenario, meaning that they did each individual task with no prompt. If they had to get a verbal prompt, that's a one. If they had to get a physical prompt, that's a two. If they had to be shown how to do it, that's a three. If they had, you know, whatever, it just keeps going up. So in order to be able to get this level of independence, they need on all, let's say fifty steps, they need zeros on three different occasions. So it really is a source of pride. He was very proud to show that he has attained mastery on going to the bus stop, going to the bank, going to the library, going to Walgreens, and seeing how, you know, all of these steps that had to be mastered, you just don't think about your tasks in that way. So it's a really great program. I'm really proud of the work that we are doing with these young adults and really contributing to making them productive members of society, and they love the program, and it's an awesome program. So I'm very proud that we do this.
I'm thinking I should get the list of their tasks and stuff and bring it home to my kids.
For my own kids who would have been out of the program, my older friends, where they could still benefit from those tasks.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to report back to the board as a delegate of the triple I.
Thank you.
It was great, actually. I was very excited to be a part of the process. It's a very vibrant process that school board members are a part of as far as giving information to the state board, kind of what our concerns are on a local level. And so, it was very interesting. I think I learned more in that hour and a half. Yeah, I know. So, but I did want to say that there was lively discussions about the exemption for PE. The things that we, actually, the things that we had all decided to, that the administration gave us as far as recommendations, did follow in that fashion, so there weren't any major surprises. But there were some lively discussions and some perspectives that are important to hear across the state. We're all very concerned about funding. We're all very concerned about charter schools, and the PE thing was another concern, but that kind of got ironed out a little bit in the session, too. So, great bunch of people, and I'll do it again if you'd like me to.
You're done. You're done.
I'm telling you, you listen out.
I also wanted to mention that we had a weekend where we got professional development as school board members, which was extremely enlightening. It was, you know, a little hard to take away a weekend so close to the holidays from our families. It really was very, very useful. And I learned a lot. I've got copious, copious notes. You think I take notes here. Wait till, I'll maybe get back to you on that. But I really appreciated the chance to go and spend time and really learn a bunch of stuff. Oh, and the other thing, yesterday, Saturday, was the magical dinner for Elgin High School Choir, and it is outstanding. Outstanding. You get a fairly decent meal, but the entertainment is wonderful. My sister would probably have liked the meal, but I thought it was great, and the entertainment was so amazing. And it's a little bit unsettling because of the twenty-some kids that are involved in this production, six are underclassroom. All of the rest are seniors. Makes you worry. Next year's gonna be great, though, I'm pretty sure.
I was just gonna remind you guys that last week, on the fourth, was our superintendent advisory meeting over the year. So that was nice. It'll be interesting to see how we go forward about choosing the next student advisors of the board. It'll be a little sad to go, but, you know, it's the best. On another note, next week is finals. So, as you can see, I am very much excited for that. Just wanted to remind you of that. I hope that you'll have a wonderful break. We'll see you next year.
I have to validate you.
And the last thing, I guess, I want to talk about is CAC, and we had the board member roundtable, and that was always exciting for us, and it's nice to be able to sit down with the CAC members and just talk and answer questions. So that was Thursday night. Anything else?
I just want to share with the board that last week, I was interviewed by John Dilenko from the PBS NewsHour regarding the work he's and the work that U-46 has done in that particular area. So, I just received an email from him saying, "Thank you for participating in our PBS report. We have a ton of good material that we'll be sorting through over the next few weeks." I've done these kinds of interviews before, and I've spent forty-five minutes, and if ten seconds make it to the air, I'll be surprised. And, but he expects the story to be ready for air sometime shortly after New Year's. So as soon as we know, we'll have it.
Okay, we'll watch for that. Anything else? Okay, CAC.
Go ahead, I'm your, sit on this end.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Melissa Owens. I'm the co-chair of the Special Education Committee. I just wanted to, I guess, on behalf of CAC, I don't know if this is what you were going to talk about here, but thank the administration, the cabinet, thank the board members for coming out last Thursday. As said, we had our roundtable discussion, I think that's always the highlight for our members. We had a really great turnout, especially from some of the other advisory councils, and I think they really appreciate, you know, being able to come out to that. We had a lot of good discussions. I've heard some favorable feedback. Do you want to add to that?
I forgot that Melissa was going to be here, so I wanted to say thank you. It was an especially nice meeting. We had, we've had three really good meetings that have come from the administration, Transformation Task Force, Common Core, and then our meeting where we had some board members and we had members of Dr. Torres' staff. And it was very cordial, it was very informal, it was very informative, and we thank you for all the time that people put in for doing that.
We thank you for having me.
And I just want to give you a quick update. We had our first program of the year for the Special Education Committee. We had our Special Education University on November 13th. We had about sixty parents come out for that. We had a speaker, Pat Rousch, from the StarNet organization, and we had a great program. We had, you know, some really great question-and-answer discussions that happened after the initial presentation. I think that the biggest challenge that we have is still, you know, we've got this massive thing of special education and how we address everything that parents need for us to address in a very short period of time. So that's really the challenge for us going forward. We continue to have parents come out, and they've got great questions, and they're engaged, and they want to learn, and how do we do that, you know, without sitting down for a week-long conference or a weekend conference, you know, which we just don't have time to do. So, but we're really encouraged by the participation that they have. We had some, I know we had some people, some staff members, some people from the administration that came out, so we're very encouraged by that. And we are gearing up, we're really kind of rolling along with getting our exhibitors lined up for our March Resource Fair on March 1st, so we're busy, busy, busy with that. We're looking forward to having a great look at that. So, that's my update.
Okay, thank you. Good luck to the board. Next item on the work session.
We have a work session. We have two work session items. The first one is a proposal to rename Sheridan Elementary School, and Mr. Tony Sanders, Chief of Staff, and Mita White is here from Sheridan. And Tony will present the report and our recommendations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Torres, members of the Board of Education. In August, Superintendent Torres received a nomination from the public to rename Sheridan Elementary School to honor Ronald O'Neill. Pursuant to board policy 4.076, Dr. Torres appointed me as the designated to work with Principal White at Sheridan, inferring a town hall meeting and also soliciting feedback from the public at large. In addition to the town hall meeting, Ms. White and I worked to see feedback, well, on the website. I think she did about five connect ads home to parents, we did a connect ad email home to all of our communities, and we really promoted this through multiple venues. The town hall meeting was held on October 15th. We had sixty individuals in attendance, of whom fifty-four supported the proposal to honor Ronald O'Neill. We also received eighty-two comments outside the town hall. In total, one hundred and forty-five people provided input on the renaming. Of those, one hundred and eighteen were supportive of the proposal to rename Sheridan Elementary after Ronald O'Neill. Three were neutral, and twenty-four individuals were opposed. Inside the report that you have in front of you, there is actually copies of all of the comments that we received as part of this process. Based on our review, we find the guidelines as outlined in board policy 4.076 have been met, and as such, administration recommends the board adopt the resolution authorizing the renaming of Sheridan Elementary School to Ronald D. O'Neill Elementary School effective July 1st, 2014.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Ms. White, right? Ms. White, I guess we've got the formal information in front of us formally, the comments that have been submitted. I guess, I'm just curious, what is the informal reaction conversations inside of your school community?
Overall, the reaction has been very positive initially. People expressed concerns, however, those individuals had the opportunity to come to the forum and speak out publicly. Since then, since the forum in October, actually, I've not had any comments. I believe that those in attendance were really overwhelmed by all the positive, wonderful stories of anyone who had any doubts that expressed to me that after that forum, they were convinced and were now in favor of maybe this school. And since then, the night of the forum, I've not had any additional feedback.
Does your school be the one most impacted?
Right.
Is that what you wanted? I'm hoping that they're on board and they're feeling good about it.
Everyone is feeling positive. They are just hoping that we do have district support when it comes to renaming certain things. For example, Battle of the Books team, you know, they've got t-shirts that they fundraise it, that say Sheridan Battle of the Books for students, and so they certainly hope that they receive support in getting different t-shirts, sweatshirts, things of that nature.
Which comes to my question. How much is it gonna cost to change all of that up?
That actually was a question that was raised by the Board of Finances as well. We were, at this point, we have, Hanon Javits is soliciting bids on the signage. Typically, when you transition a school name from one to another, it's not an overnight change. Stationery is very easy. The signage is probably the most expensive part, but we do not have those costs yet, but we will have them by the time before this is presented to the board in the next consent agenda.
And that's basically the largest...
No, we didn't calculate the cost of the metal of the, uh, metal of the bands, the metal of the books. We didn't calculate those costs, but it's related to signage and all the big elements of the facility is what we were looking at.
Any other questions? Comments? I guess I just want to say that I did have the opportunity many, many years ago to work with Ronald O'Neill, both at Elgin High School and before then, and after then. And he is a man who is very, very well-respected. I can't even, I can't even express how much he cared about kids. And that made him who he was, and that made him the great principal and leader that he was.
I have to say that having been, having two kids at Elgin High where he was principal, it's a platform that they are still working off of. It's been his basis of all the work that he did. They still have that foundation, so it seems appropriate. Slides with the board.
I just wanted to acknowledge the elephant in the room.
You call me an elephant?
Peak elephant, peak elephant. You know, I just, I know that you've been sitting back trying to take this all in, and I, I didn't know your father, but I do want to say that it, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like this is a very deserved thing, and I hope you're not feeling awkward about the situation, but that as a board that we're, and hearing the administration recommendations, that this is something quite unique that we get to participate in. So, not that you initiated this, but just in the experience, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thanks for that. I'll reiterate what I have said to some of you all privately, I think, but not to the group, and certainly to the public. My preference would be that Ronald O'Neill was not eligible, obviously, because for him to be eligible, he has to be dead. So, my preference would be that my dad would not be eligible for this. But he did pass away, and he did commit his career here, not only to U-46, but to this crew, to this community, to the U-46 communities. I did not, I've heard some buzz about, you know, me using, in fact, one of the comments was, it was inappropriate for this to be considered while I'm sitting on the board. I did not initiate this. No one in my family initiated this. I came home from a school board meeting one night and found out from my mother that she had gotten a call from someone who used to work for my dad, and said that he was going to do this unless she had some objection. And of course, my mom was honored. And I'm thrilled, and I am enjoying the process, and I am taking the criticism in stride, because I know at the end of the day, one, I had nothing to do with it, and, two, he's well-deserved. So, I appreciate, I have stayed out of it, and I appreciate the administration's recommendations. And I want my colleagues to know, because one of the comments was that I would use my influence to sway the votes, or that my fellow board members would feel compelled, because they still have to work with me. So, those of you who have worked with me for the last two and a half years, I think you know that that's not me, number one. Number two, Frank isn't here, so I'll say this to Veronica, is the only, of the new ones that are here. I'm saying it to all of you all. You can vote your conscience, and it will not impact our working relationship, because my dad's legacy in this community, and his reputation, and how we feel about him, is not dependent on this. Okay? So, I want you all to know that, and I want you to hear it publicly from me. You vote on this, you vote your conscience, and we will always still be friends, we will still be colleagues, and it will not impact our working relationship. And I want each of you all to hear that personally from me.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Maria, please, let's start with the monkey.
Oh, that's right.
Not the elephant.
The naked monkey. No, right, on the naked monkey. Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Thank you for putting the naked monkey on.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Our next work session item is one that you've seen before, and Mr. Sanders is here to present the final report and recommendations of the Transformation Task Force.
Thank you, Dr. Torres. Before you, Board of Education, is the final report recommendation from the Transformation Task Force. You recall on November fourth, Lori Roberts and I came before you and presented PowerPoint and the draft report, which has now been finalized with the recommendation. On page fifteen, you will note the recommendation of the Transformation Task Force is asking the board to accept this report and use it to inform administrative decisions day-to-day made by the superintendent and his staff, inform future bargaining, and to inform any strategic planning undertaken by the Board of Education. And as such, that is also the recommendation of administration.
Any questions?
So, there's a lot in this report. It's really intense. It is chock-full of opportunities, and, you know, things I think can really have the ability to propel student achievement forward in a lot of different ways. So, I just want to be clear what it is that we're contemplating by approving the, or accepting the report.
Accepting, correct.
By accepting the report, we're saying we're using this report as a guide and a framework for additional thinking and decision-making around planning, budget. I just want to, I just want to make sure I'm really clear. We're not saying, oh, we love the ideas in here, we don't like that idea, and we love this idea. We're simply saying we're accepting this report in order for us to use it as a vehicle for further discussion and planning.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. I just want to be very clear on that. We're all of us.
Yes. Again, you have to reiterate, this is, you're accepting this like you would do with the Citizen Advisory Council reports when they come to you.
Yes.
It does not mean that action will be taken tomorrow or three years from now. This is a visionary document with a lot of hard work that went in behind it, and a lot of research. And I know a lot of the committee members that want to continue to have conversation, but not all of these things can be able to do in this next budget cycle, or, you know, and there's certainly ramifications for bargaining with some of the recommendations. So, there's a lot, lack here.
So, we may be seeing pieces of this coming forward in different iterations, either via budget discussions or via contract discussions. So, I'm, I am clear on that. Okay? Thank you.
So, really, you're not looking for our feedback on line items as much as...
I think those will be coming back in different, in different, yeah.
The discussion will be added back home.
We've been hearing for many meetings now about the processes. So, what was the tenor of being able to submit the final document amongst the group?
I think it varied by group. I think Elementary wants to continue the conversation. In fact, I saw Sean Bieber of the committee sitting over there, just anxious to get back at it. No, I think probably a large, a collectivist group. I think that we, a lot of people put in eighteen months of work on this, and I think to have it come forward in a, in a final product for the board and for the ETA is pretty progressive, knowing it's a collaboration.
And how is this being, I mean, obviously, this is public somewhat here, public in the sense of the folks that are here can see this. So, what is the, is the final document available to everyone just to peruse and see all the work that's been done? Because, I mean, this was a collaborative effort, so I'm just wanting to make sure that, that on some level, this isn't just for us, this is for everybody to kind of be aware of possible directions that may, that may be...
Correct. And the draft that was provided to the board was the same draft. It has not changed very dramatically from the time we brought it to you before, and then at that time, it was posted online. What the board now has before it is the call of the subcommittee, the work that they had done in the background, that we did not bring forward before, that is now incorporated into the report as a, as a...
Which is why it's fifty-seven pages.
Which is why it's fifty-seven pages. And it will all be posted together, yes.
Are we providing a mechanism for maybe some general feedback? I mean, I know people are going to have reactions to this that weren't a part of the committee, and not that we're necessarily soliciting it, but I think we're already going to have rumors starting, this is going to happen, and this is going to happen. I feel like, you know, this is such a big issue that on some level, we need to be ahead of the game here with some level, some communication device that people at least can convince, can question. You know, I may be opening a Pandora's box, but at the same time, I don't want to allow the rumor mill to create things that don't exist. Does that make sense?
To share what it really means, what the report is.
Well, to share...
It doesn't mean that everything's going to happen.
Yeah, and, and I guess to have people just an opportunity to, to look at it and to respond to it, not that that's, I'm asking you to, you know, respond to every single thing, but maybe you can capture general themes of clarification that needs to be presented, et cetera. So, with, again, we've hit this stuff before with such big changes. You know, even though these changes aren't set in stone right now, people may assume that, and I don't want that to be an issue of stress right now. There's a lot of it going on.
I think there is communication that we need to do, and we're trying to communicate that this is, these are just recommendations that are, that will at some point make their way, maybe, maybe all of them, maybe only a portion of them will make their way into presentations where we're asking, you know, to be formally voted upon or formally accepted, or maybe it's not a board vote, but that because this report is out there, this is not a definitive, these are all the things we're going to do. The other, remind me of what the, so I know there's this committee, Transformation Task Force, that is made up of all the different levels here. And how is this information pushed back out to the buildings? Is it for the representatives to go back to their buildings and solicit input and bring it back to the task force? Or what I'm trying to avoid is the scenario where things start coming out of this task force, and then you've got teachers saying, "I didn't know anything about that. No one ever, we never communicated. There was no communication on this. We've seen that one." And I'm trying to figure out how widespread the communication was on, as this task force was doing its work.
Certainly, as we are soliciting feedback from all community groups, we also sent emails out to all teachers and invited them to come to the forums that we held, that we held, to make sure that they were aware of the draft report. Now, they've not yet seen the recommendations that are coming forward, and I'm not aware of the process the ETA follows, or tends to follow in terms of getting this through their membership. But essentially, all, all teachers will be seeing this final report in the same manner that you're seeing it.
And then they had opportunity for input...
Yeah, there were multiple surveys, there were multiple opportunities. I can guarantee you that there will be teachers that say, "We're..."
Never saw this before.
But not just teachers, but parents and administrators. I mean, there'll be all kinds of people, because there'll be new ones, people joining them, you know, and they will not know the history and stuff for themselves.
So, we're going through a process of accepting the report. Does the ETA, like they're already, do they go through a process of likewise accepting the report? I could respond. Are you also, like us, accepting the report? Tony said he could handle this all by himself.
I asked him.
Yes.
So, the ETA has been involved in the process all along. So, the rep assembly and members have gotten regular updates, multiple opportunities to discuss, along with the community forums that happened. The agreement was that this would come forward to both of you and the ETA for approval. So, the recommendation that sits before you tonight will sit forward for the membership this week, and they will have an opportunity not only to accept, as you are doing, or reject, but there will also be an opportunity for them to identify the reasons they, they would like to give for their vote. And if it turns out to a negative vote, then we'll report that back to the district as to what the reasons were.
I just feel like by both of us going through that process...
That was the original intention.
Is saying we are agreeing to continue this journey together. However, whatever that journey is going to look like at the end, we don't know, but I'm just saying, I feel like that means we're, we're agreeing to continue the journey together. So, I just... And that we're hoping that it kind of looks a little like this.
That was the intention.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did we ask the committee members on him? Yeah.
We did. John Bartlett is in the audience. He was on the middle school group at the high school. We had brought him this on. Elementary, we had a couple false starts, starts and stops about the committee in elementary.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment for those of you that aren't here that are representing. Thank you for your time. This is done.
Could we have the task force stand the numbers that are here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, you didn't stand, but you can do report of it through.
No, I wasn't sure.
No, I'm getting it. Yes. So, the last, the last item are contracts, bidding and boards, and what I wanted to, construction contracts. So, I'll go ahead and identify them all for the record, and then if you have any specific questions about anybody near each of them, any an oral, all of them, you may ask. Mr. Javitz, I have your facilities, or Mr. Kane. So, under number thirteen, A is Ontario Elementary, West Classroom Addition and Life Safety Remodel, number one, final contractor. B, Sunnydale Elementary, Fire Alarm System Replacement, number one, final contractor. Ellis Middle School, Intercom and Clock System Replacement, and number one, final contractor. And D, Kinder Middle School, In common Clock System Replacement, number one, final contractor.
Ontario Elementary Addition and Remodeling, Administration recommends approval of the change during the amount of forty-three thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars to be paid for.
Any other question?
We have been talking here in the middle section of the building that was built in nineteen sixty-seven. But again, that work took the bestest inspiration, and we needed to go through a review with an evidence, and it wasn't the way that we have to do it. Should it be moved?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Sunnydale Elementary, Fire Alarm System Replacement, Administration recommends approval of the change during the amount of minus three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars.
Are there any questions?
Ellis Middle School, Intercom and Clock System Replacement, Administration recommends approval of the change during the amount of minus six thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars.
Any questions?
Kinder Middle School, Intercom and Clock System Replacement, Administration recommends approval of the change during the amount of one thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and sixty cents.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. And before I ask, turn the journal on, tell Caesar good luck on the finals, and have a great Christmas, and to everyone else out there, Merry Christmas, have a great holiday, and we'll see you back here in January.